Team, 2021 to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence, a lot of things going on in the world and state. Just please contemplate those and pray for peace. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. If Alderwoman Lee would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Brian, if you would please call the rule. City Clerk?
Dunn.
Here.
Dorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Peacock.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobson.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
Ten.
Present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian, and good to see everyone on the dais tonight. Good evening as we begin the meeting of the City Council. I'd again welcome everyone in attendance and those who are viewing through different mobile devices or computers. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with your fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region as the City Council meetings are being viewed. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to help make Davenport an even greater place for everyone. If you have a cellphone, if you please put it on silent or turn it off just because it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking inside the chambers. If you wish to address the council, please come to the podium. The microphone is right above you. Please address us as a body and not as any individual, and please be respectful. We'll be respectful of you. Thank you. Will on Alderman, please move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for March 24th, 2021. There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Ms. Spiegel, City Administrator, any update for this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. Next item, will on Alderman, please move approval of the report of the Committee of the Whole for April 7th, 2021.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have three proclamations this evening: Fair Housing Month, Earth Week, National Work Zone Awareness Week, and the Fair Housing Month will be read by Alderman Peacock. Alderman Peacock, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it was just so funny. I was just talking about this. Somebody asked me, what have I learned while in council that I know what population I want to champion? That is small kids and the elderly. And fair housing is right up there. If you allow me to read a small burp before I do so, you know why fair housing is important. The older population has grown at an extraordinary rate. By 2040, there will be around 82.3 million older adults, over twice the number of older adults population by 2000. Given racial disparities and wealth, higher poor person, minority households with adults also means that older adults will face fewer resources and higher mortgage debt and other housing disparities and often result in past discrimination. That being said, the City of Davenport, I proclamation, whereas safe and affordable housing is part of the American dream and goal of all residents and whereas individuals in the state of Iowa have the right to choose where to live, purchase or rent property without discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, age, familial status, national, origin, ancestry, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, military status or unfavorable military discharge or other protection status. Whereas federal or state laws affirm the right of every person to equal housing opportunity and whereas economic stability, community health and human relations in all communities in the state of Iowa are improved by diversity and integration. And whereas the talents of nonprofit organizations, housing service providers, financial institutions, elected officials, state agencies and others must be combined to promote and preserve integration, fair housing, equal opportunity and whereas realtors locally and nationally pledge to provide equal professional service without regard to race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, national origin, any prospective client, customer or resident of any community. And whereas realtors locally and nationally pledge to affirm to pursue business practices that will ensure that everyone is welcome and no one is excluded. Now, therefore, we, Mike Mattson, in the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April as National Fair Housing Month. In the City of Davenport, to establish our community as an open and inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promote appropriate activities by private and public entities intended to provide or advocate for integration of equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of our city dated 14th day of April, signed by Mayor Mike Matson. Sorry, I move the proclamation. Thank you, sorry. Probably move a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I believe Sharon Smith is here. I know Sharon well, of course, my friend JJ as well. We are both realtors and Sharon, she's with the QC Area Realtors. You want to say something as well?
Few words to say and thank you for the proclamation. I'm Sharon Smith and the CEO for the Quad City Area Realtors. As real estate professionals, realtors take the promotion of fair housing very seriously throughout the year. To us, every month is Fair Housing Month. Many of the ordinances, zoning and legislative issues that we advocate for are rooted in the promotion of equal housing opportunities for all. To practice as a realtor, an individual must provide equal professional services without regard to race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, national origin or sexual orientation of any prospective client, customer or resident of the community and refuse to tolerate noncompliance. These are a few of the principles realtors abide by to promote fair housing. And in fact, Article 10 of the Code of Ethics compels all realtors to conduct business in keeping with the spirit and the letter of the law. Again, thank you for recognizing Fair Housing Month and for the work you do representing our city.
One second, Sharon. I will issue this proclamation and also for a photo opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Peacock and Sharon. Thank you very much. The next one is Earth Week. It will be read by Alderwoman Dickman. Alderwoman Dickman, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I feel a little bad that Judith didn't get a chance to read this since she is also very, very passionate about the environment and all of those good causes. I do think it's also very fitting that we're doing this proclamation on the same night as the fair housing since in my environmental policy class, we're learning about environmental injustice and how that interacts with creating extra hardships for people of color in the community by not having the same opportunities and potentially problems. So I will go ahead and read this proclamation and then Nicole Gleason will come up to accept. Whereas a sound natural environment is the foundation of a healthy community and a robust economy. And whereas human activities around the world are causing severe environmental damage that threatens human health and our planet's ability to sustain a diverse community of life. And whereas local communities can do much to reverse environmental degradation and contribute to building a healthy society by addressing issues such as energy usage, water conservation and protection and transportation and waste prevention, reduction and sprawl. And whereas the City of Davenport supports programs that further sustainability as evidenced by its commitment to the U.S. Conference of Mayors Climate Protection Agreement, its clean water pollution control, compost and recycling programs and its multimodal transportation plans and by continuously practicing and innovating to reduce resources consumed in the delivery of city services. And whereas the environmental realities of our time require humans to make a dramatic shift in our relationship to the earth, now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Matson and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim April 18th, 2021 through April 24th, 2021 as Earth Week in the City of Davenport and recognize the contributions the city and the community make to the daily support of a sustainable community dated this 14th day of April, 2021. I move the proclamation. Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then Nicole, you want to come up?
Just going to say a quick thank you for the proclamation and remind you all and citizens that we do have lots of volunteer opportunities coming up for various beautification around the city, plantings and things like that. So I encourage everyone to participate. Thank you.
Double clap for the earth. All right, very good. Next and last proclamation is for National Work Zone Awareness Week. And Alderman Dunn will read that proclamation. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Proclamation reads, whereas highway and street construction work as well as repairs to roadways are often completed while the roadway is open to traffic, putting both motorists and workers at risk every day. And whereas public works, law enforcement, firefighters, EMTs and other emergency personnel put themselves in harm's way on the road each day during the performance of their duties. And whereas workers diligently continue to improve, rebuild and maintain roadways so that motorists can safely and efficiently travel. And whereas accidents can be prevented by setting aside distractions, using extra caution, reducing speeds and giving work zones your undivided attention while motoring. And whereas the City of Davenport is dedicated to ensuring the safety of workers, motorists, passengers, bicyclists and pedestrians while in work zones. And whereas the City of Davenport reminds motorists of the importance of maintaining safe and smart driving habits during the construction season at all times when operating a motor vehicle. And whereas the City of Davenport also reminds motorists that hands-on use of cellphones as well as sending, reading and composing electronic messages while driving is unsafe for everyone and that motorists should slow down and change lanes if possible when approaching an emergency construction or maintenance vehicle that is stationary and/or displaying flashing lights. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Matson and the City of Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim April 26th, 2021 through April 30th, 2021 as National Work Zone Awareness Week in the City of Davenport and urge all citizens to practice safe, responsible driving while traveling on roadways year-round, especially during construction season dated this 14th day of April, 2021. And I believe Nicole Gleason is going to accept this one as well.
Oh, I move the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamation moves. And now, Miss Gleason is going to come get this.
So for this one, thank you again. And I really just wanted to remind everyone, if it really drives you nuts driving through construction, we do post all the closures on our website and you can sign up for weekly alerts of what closures are currently happening to help find your best detour route. It is spring, so take your time and make yourself aware. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Be safe. Our workers are doing a great service. We're doing a heck of a lot of street work, so please pay attention. So, thank you. The next item is petitions and communications from council members, and I see there's a bunch. So, Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. It was just about a year ago when we were jumping headfirst into, feet first into the 2020 census. And that was a busy time and of course, we were having to pivot everything that we had planned to do because of COVID. Many of the plans, face-to-face plans, had to be changed and we had to come up with other strategies. It ended up being extended. And you know, this is a critical and important event every 10-year in our country. It was then lengthened and then it was abruptly shortened. In any case, it looks like April 30th or so, or about, we will start to get the first results from the census. This is preliminary. And from that then, many things happened, how programming that the city received dollars, the city receives from the federal government, all kinds of things arise out of the census data. The reapportionment of political boundaries, which will happen, won't happen until September, but we're going to get our first peak. So, you know, stay tuned for that, be watching for that. Again, very, very important to our city and we have fingers crossed. We had people who worked very, very hard on the census. We had a team. We had a committee that worked hard. And among those who worked very hard was our public library. It was National Library Week last week and our great director, Amy Grosskopf, did share with council this week sort of the things that our library has done over the last year during COVID. They too had to change very much what they were doing. They did a lot more, spent more money on outreach materials, tried to make themselves as accessible as they could, you know, given the situation and renovated an entire library during the pandemic successfully. And were a fabulous census partner. They were very important throughout and especially toward the end when we were really under the gun and not having this short turnaround. They hosted census workers there and were a tremendous partner all through this process. So I just want to also, in terms of, you know, looking forward to the census, to also say many thanks to Davenport Public Library and the great work they do for this community. So, thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. This is an exciting day. We have a proclamation for Earth Week. The council is voting on resolution supporting environmental work, addressing the climate crisis and adapting and sustainable energy use. So, it's a very exciting time. I want to thank the entire council for supporting this, the city administrator, Public Works, Debbie Marr at the Davenport Community School District, many of the Progressive Action for the Common Good, which helped drive all this, and of course, all the letters of support we received. So, very exciting. I did not ask you, but would someone from Progressive Action for the Common Good come up and talk about the Freight House Earth Day? Just say what the date is. Apologize for putting you on the spot, but I thought of it after.
I'm Laura McCullough from PACG. We are hosting another, our third annual Far West Market Earth Day Fair and we are co-hosting it with the market. And we've always had a lot of the various conservation groups in town attend with tabling events. This year, the ISU van is coming that is, I can't remember the title of it, but they have a sustainability van that looks at soil and urban conservation efforts. And we also have the MetroLink electric bus. There will be music and lots of family-friendly events. It is on May the 22nd instead of April 22nd because we are trying to hopefully avoid flooding and also avoid any kind of extra peak with COVID. So we hope everyone from the Quad Cities can come. It's a very fun event.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Dorman.
Thank you, Mayor. I first off want to say thank you and at the same time, sorry to all the neighbors of the Village Heights neighborhood. The moment I said that it wasn't going to rain at last council meeting, I should have known it would rain. But we still had a great turnout, a great meeting, and hopefully we can get them a great new bridge here shortly. But secondly, I'd like to announce that I'm having my April 5th board meeting this coming Tuesday, April 20th at 6:30. Rain or shine because it will be here in the council chambers. So don't have to worry about that this time. And our topic will be Kathy Morris with the Scott County Waste Commission to talk about all the services they have to offer and the great things they're doing out there at the Waste Commission. So I hope to see you guys either here in person or it will be live streaming online as well if that's a better option for you. So, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Otherwise, it'll be a waste. Alderman Gripp.
To Alderman Dorman's point, we were standing out in the rain for that bridge meeting, but when you have over 20 residents standing out in the rain for over half an hour to discuss something that was very important to their neighborhood, it drives home the fact that it is important to their neighborhood and we need to do what we can to get that bridge built back for them. I do have one announcement. So the last two years have been very difficult on our riverfront with two major floods and then the construction related to raising the tracks for the Canadian Pacific Railroad. We haven't been able to enjoy our riverfront the last two years in the way that we should. So 2021 is the year that we reclaim our riverfront as our city's greatest asset, certainly our greatest recreational asset. And the kickoff for that is what we're calling the Riverfront Refresh. And you'll have an opportunity to get out on the riverfront this weekend, help to serve your community and spend some time together. So let me read the details to you. Please join the Davenport City Council and Riverfront Improvement Commission for Riverfront Refresh, a beautification and spring cleanup event that will include mulching, weeding, painting and general trash and debris collection along and throughout the riverfront. Available volunteer time slots are 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Check-in and assignment distribution will be at the Freight House, 421 West River Drive. Children accompanied by an adult are welcome to participate as well. If you're interested in volunteering, you can call the Director of the Riverfront Improvement Commission, Steve Arons, at 563-888-2235, or give him an email at steve.arons@davenportiowa.com. Or you can contact one of your elected officials and we'll get you the details as well. I had a few people reach out to me this week to volunteer. My family and I will be there. Hope to see my colleagues from the council there on Saturday. And the Mississippi River is staying in its banks this spring, it looks like. And we are going to enjoy our great riverfront this year. And I look forward to a summer of us coming out of the quarantine and enjoying all of the things we haven't been able to enjoy over the last year. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Jobson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, just want to thank those that were able to, or I just want to thank those that were helpful in having me host a six-word meeting last night at Duck Creek Park Lodge. Had a good group in person. Also had people able to attend online. So I want to thank Corey Smith, Samantha Torres, Nevada Lemke, and also Public Works Director Nicole Gleason for providing me various information. I also want to thank Ken Crokin for coming to present and having a nice lively discussion with one of our other fellow six-word residents. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Alderman Peacock.
Thank you. Due to some unforeseen circumstances, I will have the council my board meeting. I'll be traveling out of state for a family emergency. So my board meeting was scheduled for tomorrow. Scheduled for tomorrow. So I'll be leaving tomorrow morning. So, sorry, I will not be hosting my seventh board meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Peacock. Let's see. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to take a moment to thank Sergeant Harrison of Davenport Police Department for their first successful coffee with cops at the Rockingham Hybe. It was standing room only and it was really impressive to see the police officers sit down with folks and just have a nice conversation and listen to their issues. And I can't wait for the next one, which is going to be next Thursday at the Locust Street Hybe. So if you get a chance to come, show up. You'll be impressed.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the duty and the privilege to serve as the council liaison in the discussion that we're having about student resource officers. And the process has been a collaboration that's really wide-ranging with a lot of different organizations and it's definitely been a process. It was capped by a joint meeting with the school board. And then I think some of the initial goals that were communicated for a rollout period were a little bit delayed. And I felt a little bit ill-equipped to communicate directly to some of the citizens who are reaching out for feedback from me because it was such a big collaboration and we were actually taking your feedback and using it to improve the document. So I wanted to say that the rollout being delayed was actually a good thing. And I believe next Wednesday is when the public discussion will take place here in council chambers. And then the following Wednesday is when we'll have an opportunity to vote on that. So, thank you for continuing to be engaged throughout the entire process. This was a process that was brought on by the national discussion that we're having about SROs and then locally brought on by some concerned citizens. And it will come to a head here in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Ambrose. Turn your mic on.
Fourth ward once again has lost. The longtime neighborhood advocate Opal Daley. Opal is one of the strongest women I've known. And she'll be missed. The neighborhoods will miss her. And All Saints School will miss her. I just want to circle around a little bit from last week when Mayor Matson was reading letters of support of Alderwoman Lee's and the progressive Democrats' resolution. I realize there's a lot of progressives on the city council and out in the chambers here. I guess as a Catholic, I was a little taken back by the Bishop of Davenport and the Davenport Diocesan Administration, along with the Sisters of Famility in support of the progressive resolution. Not so much for what it stood for, but you know, for over 50 years, I have watched the progressive movement in the country consume the Democrat Party. And I've listened to this discussion. I think back to 1960 when this communist Soviet premier Khrushchev came to the United Nations and pounded on the podium with his shoe, warning the people of the United States that the communists would take over the country from within. So thinking back from last week and Khrushchev's warning, you know, I think they've accomplished it. You know, this is my view. I think the Communist Party of America now is the progressive Democrat Party. You know, the resolution presented to the city council by the progressives. It's important to know who the progressive party is of America and how it got started. You know, some of the older ladies out here and the older ladies on the city council probably know Margaret Sanger. You know, Margaret Sanger has been a matriarch of the modern-day progressive party and the Democrats. Margaret Sanger was an eugenic enthusiast who advocated, like the Nazis, social cleansing by eliminating undesirable, like the poor, the elderly.
Mr. Ambrose, as you have asked people not to call people's names, I'm going to ask you to keep it straight and not use those terms.
In 1973, with the support of seven progressive Supreme Court judges, abortion was made legal. abortion was made legal, leading to the genocide of seventy million innocent unborn babies in our once great country. And sadly, with funding approved by progressive Democrats in Congress, our federal government has funded genocide by abortion to other countries. So when the bishop and the Catholic administration of the Catholic Diocese of Davenport, along with the good Sisters of Humility, publicly support the misleading resolution from local progressive Democrats, they've been either deceived or willing to support of the progressive Democrat Party. Now, I think back to Saint Matthew the Apostle, who said, beware of false prophets. And I'll rest my case there.
Are you done? So I'll just, I wasn't going to say anything, but boy, am I saying something now. So listen.
As a progressive.
So Mr. Ambrose, you do not have the floor. I do now. So I am very proud to be a Democrat, but I am also very proud of this council who tries to keep particular issues focused on whatever it is the issue or agenda at, at is at hand. As you have been concerned, and I have been concerned, and quite frankly, everybody's concerned up here, when people call names or use the word Nazi or communist, that's totally inappropriate, totally wrong, and I, and you should be ashamed for, for saying that anybody, especially someone sitting in this chamber, especially someone sitting up here, especially someone like myself, who has served a country, that you would associate the word communist or the word Nazi, that is totally inappropriate, totally out of line, and you should be ashamed for saying it. Thank you.
Oh, I'm not ashamed, Your Honor.
I, I'm at the floor. You're done talking. Sorry, anyone else? Thank you. The next item is the discussion agenda. There are, there is no items on the discussion agenda. We'll move to the consent agenda. And I believe, Alderman Jobson, you have one item you'd like to bring off.
Yes, I'd just like to move that item number twenty-five be placed on the discussion agenda for a public comment. And you don't have to move, if Alderman asks, you can do it. So item twenty-five is on for discussion. Would anybody like to discuss item twenty-five?
See, okay. Fair. So you have five minutes, name, ward, or address. And if you're not here, we'd love to know where you're from, sir.
Good, good evening. My name's Dale Gilmore and I'm a resident of the sixth ward. Two quick things before I begin. First, thank you to my Alderman for giving me the opportunity to speak. Second, let me clarify what I'm about to say. For simplification purposes, I use the words "I," "we," and "us" to describe the city of Davenport, and the words "he," "him," and "they" to describe Main Street, Iowa. When I use the word "he," "him," or "they," I'm not referring to any individual or individuals. I can remember in the last few years an Alderman asking, why do we pay to pick up his garbage? Not only during the five-month baseball season, but during the other seven months when baseball's not being played. The response from staff was, it's in the contract. We can't do anything about it. A few months or even a year later, another Alderman would ask, why did he get to keep the hundred thousand dollars from Modern Woodman for naming rights to our stadium? The response from staff again was, it's in the contract. There's nothing we can do about it. After another length of time would pass and another Alderman would ask, if the city paid the entire purchase price for the Ferris wheel, which we did, and the city pays to ensure, repair, and maintain it, including all of the utilities to operate and light it, how come when he sells a ticket to ride on our Ferris wheel, he gets to keep all the money? The answer from staff again, it's in the contract. There's nothing we can do about it. Well, now you have the opportunity to do something about it. If you choose not to change that, I have a request. If you vote yes tonight to approve this contract, when a constituent asks you why we pay to pick up his garbage, you need to proudly reply, because I voted for it. When a constituent asks you why he got to keep the hundred thousand dollars paid by Modern Woodman for naming rights to our stadium, you should proudly reply, because I voted for it. When a constituent asks why we pay for the insurance, the maintenance of the Ferris wheel, including the utilities to operate and illuminate it, yet he keeps all the money collected, I want you to again proudly reply, because I voted for it. And now a bonus question. When a constituent asks why we lowered his rent from two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to only a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, I want you again to proudly reply, because I voted for it. And these are just a few. I could name many more, but I'm only allowed five minutes. In today's front page article, it states, and I quote, "The proposed lease calls for an annual lease payment of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year and requires the city to allocate a hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars annual for stadium improvements, which would increase to a hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-four," end quote. This is all true, but what it fails to mention is there are already five million one hundred and four thousand two hundred dollars worth of capital improvements already scheduled as of April first, twenty twenty-one. It sounds to me like someone's getting a pretty sweet deal, and I don't think that someone is us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very, okay.
Sure. Bill Handel.
Only on this agenda item?
Yes, of course. Bill Handel, fourth ward, Davenport, also Nashville, Tennessee. I don't look at Facebook too often, but I'm not, this morning, I, I kind of looked at, it's burning up with, with this ballpark issue. There's all kinds of people that are hot and bothered by this. And I think because of the five million dollar figure, if I recall, not too long ago, we did a total renovation of the whole stadium, tearing it out for twelve million dollars. So five million is a pretty good size chunk compared to the twelve million we spent for totally rebuild it. One of the disadvantages Davenport has is they don't have an in-house architect. You know, a lot of cities, maybe not our size, but not too much bigger than our size, have somebody on staff that they can hire or that they have that could comment on this kind of a thing and say, well, you know, this is a lot, that could be deferred. We don't have that kind of person because frankly, the architectural committee in the city, they rely a whole lot on public work, and they're never going to say anything against the city of Davenport, anything that's proposed by the downtown partnership. They'd be, you know, they, they should be packing, you know, some works somewhere else. So they're not going to make, because, you know, things that are somewhat flagrantly frivolous or expensive, more than they need to be, it's not a, it's not a defect. As far as they're concerned, it's a, it's a, it's a good thing because it brings more money in their direction. But anyway, the issue about the Ferris wheel, I've talked about it before. When we have our Freight House Farmers Market, the Ferris wheel, for one reason, you can't get to it because we don't have a pedestrian crossing. When you're using the Farmers Market, it'd be a perfect thing on whether it's nice for people to be able to use it. But the Ferris wheel is really, I think, only to be used during a ballgame. And lots, lots of folks, for one reason or another, they don't go to ballgames, especially as the city bought the Ferris wheel. And we're talking about spending more than four hundred thousand dollars for accessibility improvements. Let's have it so that the public can have access to that Ferris wheel all the time. If, if Main Street ballpark gets all the money, I mean, that, that's okay with me, you know, but, but they need to expand the hours so that people can use that Ferris wheel many more times. It ought to be open every weekend, ballgame or not. So one other thing, talking about the improvements the city has to make. When the crossings were proposed, the, our staff landscape architect made, made his best professional judgment that, that we really not have a crossing at Gaines Street. But for the benefit of Centennial Park and probably development of the area north of River Drive at Myrtle, that the crossing be at our, at our skate park, because we've got a really nice refreshment stand that's never been used because there's no good access to it. But the decision was made because the ballpark wanted it to have the crossing be at Gaines Street. So I think the city, the city, I think, still needs to have a crossing so we have a proper entrance at the east end of Centennial Park. But given the fact that we got our freebie from the, the train, from the railroad to make that crossing there, I think we need to have that count against what we already, we've already done. So, but anyway, and I also don't see the, the raccoon sculptor. I think that's something we ought to have. If we're going to be spending over five million dollars, we ought to have a hundred thousand for that sculptor. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Roger. Anyone else? Very good. Any council? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You have us. Stadium's been part of our community for ninety years. It's the city stadium, and it has an annual economic impact of over eighteen million dollars a year to our downtown and to the Quad Cities. So it's a world-class stadium. The city receives acclaim throughout the country because of our iconic stadium. You know, to keep it an award-winning, a net professional baseball stadium, you know, it takes an annual investment. And we're very fortunate because we have a great ownership group, and they've done lots for the community. They continue to donate back to the nonprofits in our community. So let's keep our world-class stadium. You know, we have people on the city council that are willing to invest millions of dollars on a playground down by the train tracks. Now, this is a small investment for a historic stadium that's recognized throughout the country, so I think it's money well spent.
Thank you. Alderman Gribb.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I do understand the, the point of contention and maybe frustration for Davenporters when they look at the city of Davenport spending five million dollars on, on a baseball park as opposed to spending that money on roads, is a lot of times what I hear. And I get that. I, I understand, I understand that we make a significant contribution to having a baseball team here in the Quad Cities. And we've had that team for many decades. It's been a part of our, our community. And, and the fact is that if you want to have a professional baseball team in your city, there is a cost to that. And the city of Davenport has always considered professional baseball to be one of the main amenities that we have and that we support, along with the Putnam and the Figgy and the River Center and the Adler. These are amenities that make Davenport a, a place to live, and there's a real cost to that. And my point is always that when we're looking at the budget, the budget should be eighty percent of the nuts and bolts, infrastructure, making sure that you're putting money into the roads and police and fire and all of the basic things that you expect from a city. But a certain percentage of the dollars should go to amenities and quality of life things. And the, and the ballpark is certainly one of those. And, and there, there's two ways to do it. I talked about this last time. Some cities, what they do is they defer the maintenance over decades and then every forty or fifty years, they, they spend tens of millions, up to forty, fifty million dollars to build a brand-new stadium, and then they defer that maintenance over decades, and then they do it again with the risk of having the, the ball team leave. The model that we've chosen to take in Davenport is that we, we pay little by little every year to maintain the ballpark with the idea that the asset doesn't degrade. And we, as Mr. Handel said, we, we put twelve million dollars into this as a city in two thousand and three, when I was still in college. And the ballpark today in two thousand and twenty-one is in better shape than it was when they did the remodel in two thousand and three. Now, there's maintenance that you, that, that you have to continue to do, and that five million dollars will, will go to it. The folks at Main Street Baseball are good community partners. They do give back to the community and, and, but they do need to be reminded that this is the, the people of Davenport's ballpark. This is the people of Davenport's and the Quad Cities baseball team. And Modern Woodman Park needs to be a place where everyone in Davenport can afford to go, feel comfortable, go, and to enjoy. So I will continue to support the model because I think the opposite is, we make a decision as a, as a city that professional baseball is not one of the amenities we want to support with our tax dollars. I don't hear a lot of people say, people putting it in that, that way. But i- if it's up to me, professional baseball is one of the amenities that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gribb. Alderman Condon. Were you trying to switch in? Okay. I'll turn to you on that.
Yeah, I apologize. I was just going to take a point, a personal privilege and say, Mr. Gilmore, if you had a column, I would read it. Your, your craft is not lost on me. That was enjoyable. Don't, I'm in support of this lease, but you, you make good points, and I always appreciate when you take the time to craft your message.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Peacock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really didn't want to comment on this, but you know, I guess since I do receive the emails and the occasional, well, two or three phone calls this morning about it, I will make comment to it. And I, I will say this, and everybody heard me say this before, I will say it again. You can tell a lot by community, you can tell a lot by a municipality by looking at its budget. You'll know where the priorities lie. And there have been many times I've been really frustrated as a council member when you vote for a seven hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand, five billion dollars worth of ballpark improvement, stuff that I probably would go for, and other things to improve certain portions of the downtown. But really, what grabs at me and which I have issues with, but where are those same energy, where are those same type of positive flow when it goes to, you know, funding something that we, we ought to fund? You know, something that I thought was a no-brainer, you know, Civil Rights Commission, I can name a plethora of other things. You know, there's programs that we should have funded, buildings that we should have done. But when, when the, you hear from the public, you know, when their assessments are going up, you can just imagine the climate that a council member is under. You get the, you get all the emails about the assessments. Now, they're hearing about the city council and its five million dollar to the ballpark, but what they don't, probably don't understand the full picture, but you must understand, coming from my vantage point, and what I see. And people talk about, you know, Alderman Peacock, you know, why are you resigning or what's all this about? This is a case in point right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. You're, you're right, Mr. Gilmore. This is a good, this is a good contract for one side. And I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but you know, the Major League Baseball has given us a lot of unfunded stuff that we have to do to keep baseball here. And, and we, as a council, have agreed to do that in the tunes of, it's going to cost us millions of dollars. I get that. My concern with this contract, as it's been before when we talked about it, was the air conditioning. We, we approved the air conditioning for nine hundred thousand a year ago, and now we're going to approve it again for a million two. I just don't, I'm just not sure that that is the correct thing to do at this time, and I'm, that's got me concerned. I'm thinking that's a want instead of a need. So I think there's plenty of other things that we could be doing at that facility, facility that we own, to fix it up that need to be done before the air conditioning. So I will be voting no.
Alderman, thank you. Alderman Dorman.
Thank you, Mayor. When I think about downtown and the momentum they've had over the past two years, it's kind of shocking to think that that's happened without baseball in our downtown region. The growth and sustainability they've had so far, even through a flood and through COVID-19, it, it's amazing. And so I, I think here to sit, sit now of the eighteen million dollars of economic impact that the River Bennetts have on our community, and specifically the breath and fresh air it breathes into our downtown, what would that look like if, if we were able to add baseball back in? And could that number grow even higher and be even more of a economic driver for our community? And? And I, I personally love professional baseball, and I'd love to see it here in Davenport, which this contract does exactly that and keeps professional baseball here in, in the great city of Davenport. And I, I hear all the time, though, also, of people who tell me that I know they do not care about baseball at all, but their favorite activity is still to go down to Modern Woman Park, have a hot dog, have a beer, sit outside in the summer, and enjoy our beautiful ballpark on our beautiful riverfront. And so to think that I could potentially not approve this contract and not have professional baseball here in the city of Davenport, that is alarming and something I would never want to do. So my, my goal is to keep professional baseball here in Davenport because I think that's something that puts us on the map as a community. And because of that, I'm supporting this contract.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. One of the things that I requested staff when they re-entered into negotiations regarding the ballpark was to clarify the ownership and the use of the Ferris wheel. And they did clarify the ownership. I asked an additional question because I do agree. We own it. We do not have the trained staff to operate it. I understand that. But is there any process or way that the city could have access with trained operators for, during activities down on the riverfront like the farmer's market? I'm asking this of staff. Is there any way under this contract that we can have it at times other than during ballgames?
I don't think it needs to specifically be addressed by the contract. As many of you have alluded to, our partnership with the ownership group is fantastic.
Yeah, and that wasn't my question, is how can we do it?
And so I, I think it's, I wouldn't want to put the burden on them, again, to say every Saturday from this, but if there are specific events and, you know, we can talk about pops or, or different things that are going to happen on our riverfront this summer. If it doesn't coincide with baseball, staff would be happy to talk with the ownership group about, about making those accommodations. I think that's a perfectly reasonable request for the city to make. And I suspect that the group we work with would be willing to, to have that conversation with us as well.
And I'd like to encourage that we do that. I think it's a pretty spectacular thing to have down there. And, and we need to use it as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I'll say a few things. So to Alderwoman Lee's point, I had had conversations with some of the ownership folks about that just last year before COVID hit. And we actually negotiated so the city would take care of putting the seats back on and take care of that because that was a cost to them. So we already talked, and they're, they are certainly willing to do that. We just didn't do it this year because of that. But they're willing to do it again. And to your point, I think we can work through that. We'll pursue that. So thank you for bringing that up. I will say, in this negotiation, I was proud of the staff and the management group and leadership at the River Bennetts to be willing to come together. And quite frankly, there were some tough discussions. But we needed to do this because if anybody who doesn't follow sports, maybe you're not, you're not paying attention. But certainly through COVID and Major League Baseball reorganizing, lack of a better word, their entire minor league system, getting a new team, and we've been gracious enough to have the Kansas City Royals come here, and all the requirements was an all-new thing. And we need to adjust that based on all the new requirements. And as it's been pointed out, there are requirements that Major League Baseball is requesting to have a team. We work through those. Another big point that was a point that I and others wanted was to get control of the facility and the capital projects. And that's what we have done in negotiation with them so that we're in charge of our facility. And the bottom line is to ensure baseball stays here into the future because it was inherently important. As pointed out wonderfully by Alderman Dorman, some people might not be necessarily interested in the baseball game that is going on at the particular current time, but they certainly are interested in the camaraderie and excitement. And I believe, certainly people can correct me if I'm wrong, that this ballpark in this place, Davenport and Quad Cities, and the team set record attendances. And they set record donations and fundraising for outside activities in partnerships with Genesis and others to give money back to the community and back to organizations to do this. So yes, some of the money goes in, but some of the money goes out to, to organizations that are in dire need of very big help. And they do that also. So it's a partnership. It was a pretty big negotiation, pretty successful. And we got control of some things that we wanted to so that we don't have to advance money well out into the future so that our staff understands and can budget and work through these things that we didn't have before. And now we have this through this contract so that I encourage everybody to please support. And I'm happy to talk to anybody that wants to call me and talk about it. Thank you. So if no one else, Alderman Jobchin, I'll ask you if it's okay to put it back on consent.
Yeah, please put it back on consent.
Okay, it's back on consent. All right, so we're back to consent. Brian, please call the roll for consent.
I think we need a motion in a second.
I apologize. There's a motion in a second. Very good. Please call the roll.
Condon?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes, except for number 25.
Ann McGinnis?
Yes.
10 yeses with Dunn's no for number 25.
Very good, Brian. Thank you very much. Our next, so consent is approved. Our next item is any other ordinances, motions, or resolutions. There are none for this evening. Next item, is there any public business? And I'll just emphasize because somebody gave me a hard time. Public with business means does anybody want to come and talk to us at the podium? Please do so, other than an agenda item. Very, okay, Mr. Handel? Please come up. I'm, I'm not going to wait forever, so. Mr. Handel, we look forward to your conversations.
To last week's comment about the Martin Luther King site, I, when I said that, I thought the site was kind of a leftover and inappropriate probably for, to honor such a great American as Martin Luther King. I just, I may have heard some gasps from the audience that I could say something like that. But the more I thought about it over the intervening week, the more I thought that probably it was true. When I came down here this evening, usually I'd come down Harrison from Five Points area. And I said, let me go down Main Street, which is my, my favorite street in Davenport. It's probably the most consequential historic street. As you know, when you're going down from Locust toward the river, get to a certain point, you see the Civil War monument. And that was designated back in 1880 when it was built, 15 years after the war, by the greatest grateful citizens of Scott County in memory, the fellow citizens who died in defense of the Union. Now, that was a very important thing, and it was a very important war. A good portion of our citizens didn't come back. I don't know how many, a few hundred. And we weren't that big of an area then. So it was a big deal. So just like Gettysburg, they consecrated, their, their loss consecrated that site. And I think we need to get a consecrated site for Martin Luther King, not necessarily where there was the first parking garage in Davenport that was demolished in 1985 and it's been a parking lot for 15 years after that. How about if we have something with cars whizzing by? How about if we put something designated for Martin Luther King right on this sacred road of Main Street from Vanderweer with its fountain, fountain signifying life? Dylan Fountain at the end signify life and get the Mississippi River. You don't have cars whizzing by. It's, it's, it's a sacred street. On one side of that Civil War monument, Trinity Cathedral, beautiful cathedral. On the other side of it, right on line with the monument, Davenport High School, now Central. You go down the hill. You've got the block that was designated by Leclerc for, for the church, St. Anthony's Church. Martin Luther King was a pastor, of course. Across the street from it on Main Street, our main library. Education for all, education for all. Now, Eastern Iowa, their campus, right across at, at Third and Main. Education for anybody, whether they can afford it or not. We've got the, the old Davenport Bank, which I predict in 50 years will be our city hall. It has its great, great hall, murals showing the founding of this city. I think in 50 years, these meetings should be held there. We'd be, Los Angeles, Philadelphia. Other cities have great city halls. We should too. But anyway, what I'm proposing for a location, for a park in an area that's been a driving bank, just to the south on the sunny side of our library, I want that whole area to become a park designated to Martin Luther King. So that students, people 100 years from now, will see that. It won't be near Railroad Viaduct. It'll be something important because those things, that Civil War monument, Main Street, Vanderweer Park, the river, Main Street Landing, that's where it ought to be. We've got the money. We, we got that land that we sold in front of the River Center. We're getting land from that lease. But anyway, I think that's a much better place for it. A great city has good planning. That's where Park for Martin Luther King should be. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Ryan Drew, business rep with Operating Engineers, Local 150, based out of Rock Island, Illinois. Iowa resident, but certainly not a Davenport, unfortunately. So I know it's a little bit after the fact, but I wanted to start off with some good news and appreciation for the council supporting number 14, resolution to buy the, your hot mix asphalt from Tri-City Asphalt. I know that's listed as a Bettendorf business, but they've been in business for many years and have made a substantial investment into their workforce by partnering with building trades. But also anybody that's drove down 22 can see the investment they've made in the southern part of Davenport with that new facility and certainly cleaned it up and looks very professional. So great investment and, and great return on public tax dollars in the building trades eyes. Another thing I wanted to, since I was speaking tonight, was I guess bring up another topic that we had discussed some time ago.